Good evening, it's now 6:00 P.M., so the regular session of the Planning Commission, the City of Lancaster, please come to order. Tonight, our invocation will be offered by Vice Chair Hall and Commissioner Harvey will lead us in the pledge. If you'd all please stand.
All your heads with me. Lord, I ask that you continue the blessings you have bestowed upon us, this commission, our city, staff, and those visiting us tonight. Thank you for allowing us to do your will and the business we discuss. Thank you for this holiday season. Allow us to travel safely for our family get-togethers. Thank you for the soldiers that protect us and the families that support them. In your name I pray. Amen.
Please join us as we honor our nation's flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Another roll call, please.
Commissioners Diana Crook.
Present.
Miguel Coronado.
Present.
Cassandra Harvey.
Present.
Raj Molly.
Here.
Fabian Terassiano.
Here.
Vice Chair Randy Hall.
Here.
Chairman James Foose.
Here.
We have a call.
We do. Thank you. Public business from the floor. If an individual is unable to stay for the entire meeting, we offer a period of time now for comments. That would give you a couple of minutes to talk about whatever you want to talk about. If we don't have any early speakers?
No cards, Mr. Chairman.
All right. So then any person who would like to address the commission on any agendized item is requested complete a speaker's card for the Recording Secretary identifying the agenda item you'd like to speak on. We only have two tonight. And once we call that item, then you'll have an opportunity to speak. Deputy City Attorney has an, or Assistant City Attorney, sorry, has an announcement. At least she shared it with me today, being a very important day in your life and ours too.
I'm happy to announce that today is my first day as a city employee.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
We always thought you were a city employee. First item is our consent calendar, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting in November 17, 2014. Have a motion, please.
I make a motion that we approved minutes from the regular meeting from November 17, 2014.
Thank you.
I second that.
Thank you. Questions, comments? Please vote.
Mr. Chairman?
What?
We're having a little bit of trouble with the voting thing. Would it be possible to take a voice vote on this?
Anything is possible.
Thank you.
As I mentioned to someone recently, the impossible, or the difficult we do immediately, the impossible takes a couple hours longer. So maybe we should poll the commission and see if anyone's technically, has the technical expertise to fix the voting machine. Anyone volunteer?
Okay.
I've got a hammer in the back of the Jeep. What do you think? No?
Not unless it flies. I can't help you.
All right. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed?
I stand in abstentia.
And, thank you.
Abstained as well.
All right, two abstentions, five yeses.
Three, I believe.
Were there three? I'm sorry.
Abstention, yes. Mr. Terassiano.
I see.
Commissioner Harvey. Commissioner Coronado.
Oh, okay. Three abstentions, four yeses. Thank you. See what happens when we don't have the electronic monitor? Just falls apart.
Oh, now it's bad.
All right. Thank you, Joyce. Should we test it? Okay, let's all vote and see what happens. Wait a minute. It's not blinking. Got us all excited and now it's not working again. Okay, forget it. We're working on the shortest meeting in history, so, you know, let's not mess it up, huh? All right, first item of business is a new public hearing for conditional use permit This is an applicant for a request for an extension from Investment Concepts, Inc. So, would anyone care to hear a staff report on this item? Nope? Nope? All right, then. If the applicant is sure they have an opportunity to speak to us, that they'd care to. Evening, and please identify yourself for the record. Thank you.
Russell Coy with Investment Concepts.
Thank you.
Members of the commission, we've read the conditions, approve of the conditions as written. And we ask for your vote of approval. We are moving forward with the project and the plan completions and hope to get them in for a plan check very soon.
All right, we're good. Thank you. All right, then. Anything else from anyone?
Mr. Ludke?
No? All right, then. Without objection, the public hearing is closed, and we'll consider a motion on this application.
I move that we grant a one-year extension to December 17, 2015, based on the findings contained in the staff report and subject to added condition numbers 12 and 13 and all other previously approved conditions.
Thank you.
I second that motion.
All right, then. Any questions, comments, concerns? Well, then, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed?
No.
Go ahead.
I'm abstaining.
You're abstaining, all right. Six and one, then. Six yeses, one abstention. Thank you. Congratulations. Good luck on your project. Continued business. This is an item we've spent a little time on previously. It's the temporary and promotional signs issue. We did receive a handout earlier, or in our packet. Is it the same as we received previously by email? Okay, great. Thank you. So, the presenters are Mr. Ludke, Ms. Corbett, and Ms. Davis.
Mr. Chairman and members of the commission, as you've noted before, you are some proposed standards for the various types of temporary signs, which at our last meeting you indicated as a commission you were willing to consider. And what we'd really like to look at doing this evening is to give you the opportunity to go through each of those. We have tried to look at what some other jurisdictions are doing. We've had some internal discussions between staff members on what we think are appropriate ways to go about looking at each of these different types of temporary signs. And we think that if we can kind of do that in an orderly fashion, we can get a pretty good idea of what some direction should be on the standards for each of these. A couple of things that I want to call to your attention. I know that in our discussions, we've looked at trying to come up with this menu or similar approach, cafeteria approach, if you will, to giving people some options on the types of signage that they could use and perhaps allowing a certain number of those per year or in conjunction with the other. We're not at that point yet of recommending what those combinations should be to you. We're really trying to get some feedback this evening on how comfortable you are with the standards for each of these individual types of signage. The other thing, and, you know, I want to be clear on it, there are a couple of sign types that although the commission had indicated they were willing to consider including within the overall framework, from a staff perspective, primarily because of aesthetics, we would ask that you give some reconsideration to whether or not you do in fact want to include those. And those specifically are pennants and what we're calling the, I have to always look at my, the pole lamp post signs and also, what do we call it, in-ground mounted wire post signs. We think there are some potentially, potentially some aesthetic concerns about those. We're also concerned just about whether or not, in some cases, the weather conditions and environmental conditions in the city are conducive for them. But once again, you know, this is a decision that as a commission you ultimately have to make. We're simply expressing to you from a staff standpoint that perhaps some reconsideration on those ought to be given. So with that as the introduction, we'll approach it any way you want to in terms of this discussion, but that's kind of the way we were looking at going through this for this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Ludke. To define the scope of these sensible signs or a sensible, potentially sensible sign ordinance modification, commercial and industrial, does not include car dealers, new car dealers, used car dealers?
Automobile sales lots right now have a different set of standards that they're allowed to have. The code, you know, deals with that. The commission was not really directed by the council to look at that specifically. And in the case of the auto mall, they're an association that actually sets some of their own standards for what they need to do. So that's another separate approach.
All right.
But this is really to look at the regulations for things outside of car dealerships.
I just wanted to be clear on that. All right. So the first item is banners, then, and you've categorized them in six categories, length of time, location, how they're mounted, square footage, the height, the material, and the total number allowed. So, so we take up banners. Do we know what banners are? We've defined them?
Banners is, as we're looking at in this particular, and let me just say, we haven't worked the fine language in terms of all of the definitions.
Okay.
But what we're looking at here are signs, temporary signs, which are basically placed on the building wall. In this particular case, as you can see, we're recommending that those be made of vinyl for, yeah, for durability and that they be secured in a method that includes actually being affixed to hooks or some other place, some other method with grommets in it and so forth. The idea being that then they're not kind of flying and so forth. We're not recommending banners be allowed to be tied to posts that are freestanding. We've had situations where they've actually been tied between landscaping trees at times and so forth. So what we're seeing here is banners can be used for the length of time that we've defined, that they can vary in size depending on what the size of the business establishment of the building is. And we're saying that you can have them based upon the amount of frontage of the building and so forth, but they need to be on the building and affixed to it in a way that looks neat and orderly and so forth. So that's what our recommendation is in terms of banners.
We had the banner on one of the ones in Valley Central Way that was like a menu option, and it was mounted on a fence in front of the building. Those would not be allowed?
Not in the way that we're defining it here, no.
And then it says the location and securing methods. Are you going to be real specific on what you don't allow or are you just going to be on what you do allow?
Actually, if that's a need, we can certainly do that. And it may be worthwhile to say that it does not include any kind of a freestanding arrangement where it's tied between freestanding posts and can't be tied between landscaping. And it can't actually even be tied around building elements the way that we've defined this here. What we're looking at is trying to get a banner that actually, and I'm imagining for, particularly for businesses that want to use this on a regular basis, they're going to install some kind of a hooking system or something else, and then they actually can just place that banner up at the location. One other thing, and it came up in the commission's discussion when they were looking, when you were looking several months ago at all of the photographs, there was some concern expressed because there was a banner that was placed on a, in a building element. I think it was a tower of some kind. And so our goal here would be to place that below the main parapet of the building or the roof line, and we'll work the language on that. But that's what we're recommending as our intent.
Can they put it like on their windows if they don't have a lot of frontage on the building and stretch it across the windows?
No, not in the way that we're defining it. We would, we would look at window signs or temporary window signs as a different, different animal, and that's actually defined further on in the, in the code. But no, in this case, the banner would actually look as much as anything like a building wall sign, but obviously it can only be used for, for a specified period of time as defined.
Some of the storefronts have their main sign there, so they wouldn't be able to use a banner.
Yeah, they may not be able to.
Is there any situations like when we're coming down the freeway and we see the buildings along the freeway, are they allowed the banners back there?
Right now, we're not defining that as a, as a street frontage, but that's something, you know, we could look at. The intent is that the building frontage would either be something that faces a parking lot, has an entrance that the public usually uses, or is oriented towards a local street of some kind.
The freeway is not a street. The freeway is a highway as opposed to a street by definition, yeah?
Yeah.
It could still make a city look pretty tacky if there was just tons of that up there.
Yeah. Yeah, and I would, I would highlight it once again, what we're looking at here is one banner per that frontage, and it's limited to either the 32 square feet or the 50 square feet depending on the size of the establishment.
Would there be any value to adding it to the back for those few businesses that do have that?
To the back facing a freeway?
Freeway or.
I wouldn't recommend.
Or a road.
I wouldn't recommend it. No. We have tended, particularly in commercial centers, to allow permanent signage to orient towards the freeway within certain restrictions, but, you know, kind of looking at the, at the reason for having temporary signage, my personal feeling, and it is a personal feeling, is that trying to create what you might call impulse buying by orienting in some way towards, towards a freeway, I'm not going to recommend that to you.
So Commissioner Hall, were you trying to clarify, or I'm trying to clarify with you, were you trying to say add language so that it's clear that they cannot put banners on those backs of those buildings that face the freeway or that you can see from the freeway? Is that what you were trying to say, to add the language?
It's a sensible sign ordinance, and I see those signs, and some of them can be temporary that go up there, grand opening signs alongside the freeway, and they may, you know, blow down after a while or become.
So maybe we could add that language? Is that appropriate to do?
Mr. Ludke said he didn't think that it was appropriate to add it.
Well, in terms of, in terms of allowing them, are you looking at specific language that does not allow them or?
I don't have a problem with them being back there.
Okay.
Personally, I think it would be fine, but if the city sees something back there that's been there for two years and it's starting to be shredded by our gentle winds that we have, then it would be a method the city could use to have them take it down.
Well, isn't the assumption that these temporary signs would be permitted? I mean, that's the assumption, correct? There's a, there will be a process yet to be discussed.
Yes.
To clarify, a process of approval, methods of installation, on and on and on. So we're not, we're looking at a very broad scope here as opposed to narrowing it down to specifics. I mean, I personally agree that the facades of the rear of buildings that happen to be adjacent to the state highway are not an appropriate place to do temporary advertising signs, whatever they may be called. It seems to me they're a distraction.
Yeah.
Also, you've got an indulation of the land adjacent to the freeway. So some are up rather high, some are at grade, some are below grade. You've got all sorts of opportunities within our city limits, so it'd be a nightmare to, it seems to me, to administer, but that's just my opinion.
I'd like to piggyback off something Randy had alluded to earlier, which is the maintenance of signs. Do we have anything in our regular sign ordinance or draft ordinance, maintenance and care of signs? Some of these signs have looked like they've been, been up for years and years and have been weathered by the elements here in the desert.
There is, there is a general provision within the city's sign ordinance that says that there's, I can't remember exactly how it reads, but it's, it's something to the effect of there's an assumption that a sign owner is going to keep a sign in good condition and maintain it. We can certainly include something in provision to temporary signs, even though we're trying to address the, the issue of appearance by limiting their length of time. We can certainly add something that says, you know, notwithstanding all the other provisions, it is assumed that, you know, any temporary sign will be maintained in, you know, safe and attractive condition or some appropriate legal language.
Maybe as new condition. Go ahead.
Yeah, I had, I was going to mention that because 60 consecutive days, we know how brutal the prevailing winds are here in the valley as well as the, the direct sunlight. Surprisingly enough, banners can age pretty fast, even the ones that are constructed for, you know, outdoor use. So we might want to consider that from an aesthetics perspective.
May be too long. Depends, I guess it depends on the orientation. If it's on the north side of a building, it won't get beaten down by the sun, but if it's on the south, it will. And, you know, how do you, how do you quantify that or put a value on that? I don't know.
How do you make it sensible?
Yeah.
This draft does have it at 60 consecutive calendar days. I did go back and look at some of my notes from one of our previous meetings when we discussed, and I think at some point, I believe Commissioner Molly mentioned that perhaps 30 or 40 days might be appropriate for a banner because they do tend to wear a little more quickly. So obviously, the length of time is something that you can discuss and decide what's appropriate.
Yeah, also, people recycle the same sign over and over, so if we.
You'd be concerned about the aesthetics and.
Correct.
So they would have, they would have to be enforceable language to make sure that the facade itself, the sign itself, would be pleasing and not detrimental and not falling apart in raggedy or whatever words you want to use. Raggedy comes to mind. We've noticed too, and I think we've discussed this in the past, where temporary banners have been used in lieu of permanent signage. So I don't know how you work that in or even if you do. If a banner, you know, is being used in place of a permanent sign, then once, once the period of time has expired, the expectation is you'd have a permanent sign. You wouldn't be, for retailer or whatever, it'd be kind of odd and kind of difficult to put them up and take them down, and you would have no identifier on your building.
I think my personal experience is once signs, they go up, and by the time you're done, it's there done. I don't think you can reuse it again. Personal, that's my personal experience on my, using on my own restaurant, so.
So if you, so if, so if the.
So I think if they probably, I mean, we can't tell them like what to, you know, they can't use it again, but, you know.
Oh, yeah? Sure you can.
We can? Okay. But I think usually once it's, we put them up, they're pretty much like use it regularly. You know, that's, they're pretty bad. So you can't really reuse it again.
So just, you know, on some of the things we really hadn't considered, under the definition of sensible, some of, some of the issues are cost-related, I would think. I don't know. I, it's been a long time since I purchased banners, and I have no idea what a 32-square-foot banner is worth today. A vinyl banner was.
Usually, I think $150 to $200.
Plus the installation.
Yeah, plus that.
And that, depending if you have to use a cherry picker, whatever, you might spend another $300, $400 getting it installed. Hmm? And taking it down.
Yep, that's.
Interesting.
Isn't temporary signs normally something somebody just puts up on a whim? How's the business owner going to find out that their sign is not in compliance? Is, are they going to be schooled and have to do this, or are they going to be just cited right off the bat? I mean, sensible is what drove us to this position to begin with.
The city tends to use kind of an education process on it. And as an example, if someone's placed something without a permit and code enforcement finds it, they're almost always, assuming that the, the item they've placed is got, is approvable in some way, they'll simply say, look, you, you require an approval, you didn't get it, you need to go through the Development Services Department and obtain the actual approval. And in many ways, this is an ongoing education process, so, you know, sometimes, I mean, we've given seminars to, to, you know, business classes, other kinds of things, so yes. And we'll do what we can in terms of publicity and other things to, to let people know what they can and can't do. But yeah, sometimes it's a one-on-one issue because, you know, you're busy running a business, you're not paying attention to everything the city does in terms of regulation.
Your suggestion on the square footage is basically four by eight would be the standard size and then a four by 12 or something of that nature. Somewhere I read, but it's not addressed in banners, nothing larger than four feet. So would that apply to all temporary sign?
No, we, we've tried at this point to do everything, you know, by category here.
Okay.
So our dimensions and our square footages, at least for banners, are only for banners. Others are for other types of signage.
Okay. Well, so there's no banner shall exceed four feet in height, so that means it's got to be 12 foot long with 50 square feet, right?
Yeah. Yeah, if they choose to, if they choose to do that.
Okay. So, the last bullet point, one banner per street or storefrontage, or storefrontage, it's one or the other, is that what the suggestion is?
I, I think the way that we looked at it is that you would be allowed a banner for any building wall, which, which is defined as a street frontage wall. And we, we actually define that right now in our, our code as far as wall signs and other things, so we would take a look at, at how that can be pulled over. But, we were also willing to allow a, a banner for anything that is a, is a storefrontage, which we normally define as a side of a building that has an entrance that the public can regularly utilize. And sometimes, obviously, those aren't the same, so.
So, your, so your corporate drug on the door, how do you, how do you define that as the front door? Because it doesn't have a front, the front door's not on the front edge of either street. There you go. Now what?
Um, that's true, although I'm thinking for most of them, not all of them, if you look at, for instance, the, the drugstore that is at Thirty-Fifth West and Avenue L, the southeast corner, they actually have two building walls that would be defined as, because that, that frontage faces the streets.
You mentioned, you know, which, which wall is the front door?
[laughing]
Or maybe I misunderstood you.
Yeah. Yeah, we, we would have to come up with some interpretation. Maybe, though, the point that you're making is maybe there should be a, a limit on total number of banners at one time. That would be another consideration. So, for a corner lot, you know, maybe two.
You have like the strip mall on Gadsden and K, big square piece at the end of the building that sticks out, and then all the storefrontages run down Gadsden. Could they stack those banners on that end?
No, you'd really, you'd really, but that's another good point. Where's the location can be, I, I mean, for someone who's in a, kind of a shop building where you've got a row of, of businesses, I would say the banner really needs to be directly where the frontage of the business is located.
I've seen banners mounted on parapets, on, I don't know what you'd call them, like reverse J hooks on the top of a parapet.
Right.
With the banner below it.
Correct.
The way you defined it here, that, that wouldn't be approvable, then?
Um, no, because I think we're asking it be secured at all four corners.
Yeah, I think you mentioned it'd be mounted below the roof line.
Yeah, no, it couldn't, the, the idea is not to have the bottom flapping free, so to speak.
What I, what I'm talking about is, you know, your, your screen parapet that's above the roof line.
Mm-hmm.
What I call a reverse J hook, it's a, it's a hook that, then the, then the devices attached to that, and it's below that, that point. I'd have to sketch it out for you.
Okay.
But, that would not, at least in my understanding, that wouldn't be an appropriate location for a banner.
Not, not from the way you're describing it, I don't think that was our intent.
What about banners that are, well, so the, so the corner operator would have a distinct advantage on banners as opposed to-
Yes. Yes, they would. So would an end cap if it's, just happens to be located.
A true end cap?
Yeah.
Okay. Anything further on banners? Anybody wants to bring up? Nope? Okay. Teardrop signs, wind dancers and flags, all similar categories.
Yes, these are the, the things that I think actually ultimately triggered this, this whole deal, but you're familiar with them. They come in different shapes, sizes and so forth. So, this, this is what we're proposing in terms of those.
So, on our Gadsden and K place, there's a piece of grass out there that marks off the parking lot. How many teardrop signs could we have in there? Is there going to be a limit on how many are going to be there? Could there be one for each business? Are we gonna-
Kind of just talking about that issue, we, we actually had that same discussion the other day, and although we haven't included it in here, there may be a need to try and come up with, with some kind of maximum per frontage or minimum separation distance between those, if you were to ever have that kind of situation where you've got, you know, everybody deciding at one time that they, that they suddenly need to have these. So, it, it has been a point of discussion, and, and if the commission wants us to take a look at that, probably an appropriate thing to think about, so that you don't end up with a lot of competing stuff.
Would the teardrop sign, say like on our J eight and Twenty-Fifth West, our new buildings that are going in there, they're not going to have like grass, they're not going, they're going to have some kind of zero scapeing, there won't be a really good way of planting that sign in that area. Is there going to be some sort of setback in the medium, or is there going to be allowing to have the teardrop set in some kind of a bucket or a teardrop sign holder?
One of the methods of displaying these teardrops, it's a, it's a large disc, like a plastic disc that you fill with water, and that secures it, so you don't have to use visually ugly things like sandbags or what have you. So, that would, that would account for non-grass or non-dirt related areas.
Well, they could interfere with sidewalks, are, is there going to be some language to keep them from interfering with sidewalks? Well, that, the, the new center you're speaking of, those, then, that would be on the backside of the building.
Yes.
It wouldn't even be in front of the, the business itself.
It would be street-
So, we're not going to allow temporary signs behind businesses, are we?
Yeah, that, that's, thank you, that's, that's a good point. The way that we have drafted this, if you look at businesses and, and, let me understand, let me make sure that you're clear on what we mean by our language. We have a, a provision that says businesses located within a shopping center, and what we mean by that is, is a case where you have inline stores. Now, sometimes, very rarely now in, in our area, but you, you sometimes have those pushed right to the sidewalk. But, in most cases, in a shopping center, you've got a parking lot. What we're suggesting here is that if people use those teardrop signs, that they can't go out into the landscaped area that may be, you know, a hundred or some odd feet away from the storefront, that they have to be by the storefront. And that's the way the language is drafted right now, within two feet of the storefront, so that you wouldn't have, you know, a stretch out in a, in a landscaped setback and so forth. If you have a freestanding building, then we're saying that if you have greater than five thousand square feet, that's where you could have that situation, because we did define that to either be within the parcel. In some cases, those are buildings that are pad buildings or other things that are, you know, they have a defined parcel, or they can be within three feet of their, of their actual business. So, so we tried to, we tried to draft them a little differently, trying to get away from, it may not be the world's best example, but if you look at the center that's at the southwest corner of J eight and Fifteenth, it's, it's got a Del Taco and some other stuff in it, but its buildings, its, its inline stores are way, way, way off the street. What we wouldn't want, from our perspective, is that those stores bring their teardrop signs out to the frontage on Fifteenth. And now, you've got signs for stores that are, you know, there's no real relationship between them. That's what we're trying to avoid.
There's, yeah, they, they used to try to get away with that in the old Mervin Center, I remember back in the day.
Oh, yeah, because they would set signs on that bermed area. That, I, yes. The, the other concern, and I, you know, the zero scape issue that one of you brought up, I think is very important too. In centers now where you're going to have more and more of that type of landscaping, quite often, they have a fabric that they lay under that, that area. I'm not so sure that you're going to have a lot of, of center owners that are going to really want those things piercing that on a regular basis, so that's a consideration too. Now, there may be private CCNRs or private restrictions, but on the other hand, I don't want to be encouraging that to happen.
So, an underlying of fabric materials, as you've defined, typically you lay, overlay the DG on it, and then you have a soil stabilizer. So, you start interfering with that, and, and it really gets complicated for maintenance.
Right.
So, you also have the, what do you call, the meandering sidewalk issue, but I think you, you clarified it, that it has to be within the property line.
Mm-hmm.
So, what we see is the curb gutter sidewalk, there's still a substantial, potentially substantial setback beyond that.
Correct.
So, right now, the normal use of teardrop signs is going to be completely changed. We're not going to see them hanging out towards the streets anymore and things like that.
Yeah, that's not really what we want, so.
However, there are some businesses that have good street frontage, or the buildings that are close to the, the streets, so they, I mean, as long as it's within their property line, they'd have an opportunity.
Yes. Yeah, and, and-
Use it or not is another thing.
Right. One other thing that I, I think we'll call out here too, unlike banners, we, we, given the nature of these types of signs, to us, they appear to be less durable, so we restricted their time more, at least in the recommendation, so.
But, the same standard would apply, that they'd have to be aesthetically pleasing and-
Correct.
-appear to be like new when they're installed.
Yes.
Or something of that fashion. On the third bullet point down on the two, two dancers, talk about thirteen square feet, which is a height of seven feet, so that's slightly less than two feet wide or whatever, and those are tapered. So, I'd give code enforcement a real headache trying to sort that out, I would imagine.
Yes, but, hold on. Randy, Randy Davis is our assistant planner, who did a, a good deal of the research on this, and I, as I recall, you said you went to websites where they sell these and tried to, to line them up as best. You might want to highlight that.
Like, so he said, I did go to several websites that sell these products, and based on the different heights, the seven feet is, is a standard, it's the smallest that they have, is, you know, seven feet tall. We decided to go with that one for the smaller scale stores. And then there's another height, I believe it's like eleven feet, and we started using that, we went to the next one, which is thirteen feet, I believe, for the larger big box stores, for lack of a better name. But, they accommodate all type of commercial uses, they just have different heights depending on what you're looking for. So, based on the pictures and them showing a human compared to it, it was still a decent height, and they could put enough information on it that could be visible from the streets.
And the, and the square footage is, the copy is the same on both sides? Not necessarily. So, it'd be reverse copy on one side and readable copy on the other?
Because you can have copy on both sides, it doesn't interfere, is, is it enough, if I'm understanding you correctly, could they have signage on both sides? Yes, they could.
But, are we going to consider that in the regulation? In other words, if they're like a silk screen type sign, banner, whatever you want to call it, teardrop, if you have copy on one side, it bleeds through, it's reversed on the other, yeah? How do you deal with that, or are we?
Well, according to the pictures, I'm not sure the thickness of the material that is used, but I saw signs where they had copy on both sides where it wasn't, you see, reading it backwards.
Very good, thank you. Put a lot of time in this, haven't you? So, on the total number allowed, you're suggesting that if you're within a shopping center and not a freestanding building of five thousand square foot or larger, you get one? Is that about right?
Correct.
And then if you're five thousand feet or larger and your property pad be a hundred feet long, well, let's say a hundred and fifty, you get ten? Or am I misreading that?
Uh, no, we, we're limiting to two as recommended, but this kind of comes back to the issue that was raised a little earlier about how close, what if you had multiple businesses using this? So, what we tried to do was also set up a situation where you could, you had to separate them by fifteen feet. It may not have come out quite right, but-
But, that's your intent?
Yeah.
If you have two, they got to be at least fifteen feet apart.
Right. Yeah.
But, no more than two.
Yeah, that was our idea, was to limit them to two.
How do we feel about that? That's two maximum, I guess is what you're talking about, right? No matter how much your frontage is or how big your building is.
I don't know how you guys feel about this, but what about one per business, one hour of that size? It's same per business. It's just one.
Mm-hmm.
It says per business, in the first line, on that last bullet, four windows, well.
Mm-hmm. So, if you're Carl's Jr., or somebody like that, that would use this type of thing, typically, that's one.
Now, that is one of the cell phone stores.
Yes. I think thirty-seven or whatever.
Yeah, as, as drafted, because a fast food restaurant, usually about thirty-five hundred square feet of floor area, one.
Yep.
That's how it would be under the current. It would, it wouldn't be till you got to, well, I don't know, you'd ever have these, the sit-down type restaurant, the, the Applebee's Chili's of the world, they're usually touching five thousand square feet or thereabouts. Yeah, they in theory could have two under, and it kind of goes back to Commissioner Cook's point, that, yeah, if you, if you hit that five thousand square foot threshold, you get another one. Below that, you get one, the way that we drafted it.
Yeah, most of them are under five thousand because of code considerations, construction considerations, right? Okay. So, if you're on an end cap, but not a shopping center per se, happen to be a retailer that's in a, what one might call a shopping center, but it's really not a shopping center because of the tenant mix, you get one?
Yes, as proposed.
As this is defined.
As it reads, yes.
And the most you could get would be two?
Correct.
Okay. Anybody got any heartburn over that? Okay. Whoa, let's talk about the famous window signs. Almost done.
Let me, let me highlight this a little bit for you too. Right now, the way the city's code reads is you can have twenty-five percent of windows covered with permanent signage. You are allowed to have forty percent coverage for temporary signs. What we're recommending is that you simply say, you simply take the entire square footage of the windows, and you can cover twenty-five percent of it with temporary signs. of the windows and you can cover 25% of it with temporary signs.
And no consideration for permanent?
Um, if you have permanent window signage and you're gonna, you, you can only cover totally, you can only cover total up to 25% of the overall window area. So, let's say you had 100 square feet of window area, you already have a permanent sign that takes up 12 square feet, you could only add another 13 square feet of temporary signage. And really, the, the goal here is to try to start addressing the issue of businesses that just plaster a lot of temporary window signs into their window. We, uh, we get a lot of comment from our public safety people about that, and I'm not saying that you pass an ordinance and that will suddenly stop, but right now, trying to address this 25 and then 40 seems to be difficult. I, I, I'm just saying, from ease of enforcement and appearance, um, why don't we just say you can cover 25% of the windows, whether it's permanent or temporary, and there you go. And if a business has already used 25% of its windows, well, then it'll have to come up with other temporary sign approaches.
And windows include doors? With the glass?
That's a good question, and I don't think we even discussed that, but it's a good point. Personally, I don't like covering doors with signs because-
It's not very safe.
Kind of hard to see who's on the other side, so.
I, I don't know if it's semantics, but if we're saying glass, that's quite different than saying window. I don't know, semantics?
No doubt.
So, perhaps that addresses that? So, I don't think the doors would come into play unless you're just saying 25% of the glass.
It's a good point.
Either that or, either that or exclude doorways.
Maybe that's the language we perhaps should use.
I'm sure, I'm sure if this were to be adopted in some form like this, that every fast food restaurant would tell me that their window, their drive-through window counts as window, so they're not covering anything, so that'll get transferred around, and I guess I'm willing to live with that, so.
What about the mild wire type? Some, in some corporate applications, you have a, have a mild wire type, type, um, permanent sign that goes behind the glazing?
That's on the last page.
What do you call that?
Inflatables are on the next page.
No, 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 I'm talking about-
The see-through.
Yeah.
Any, any consideration for that?
No, but I'll tell you one thing that we have actually seen, and it's going to come, in fact, it's already appearing in different places, is the technology has advanced to the point where you can actually have window signs that don't require you to actually install the sign. They, they are created by projection or other methods, and they've actually now gotten to the point, I was fascinated watching a video of this, where, let's say you have a restaurant and you have a glass storefront area or whatever that's right at the entrance, you can actually project the menu on there to the point that you can use touch technology and you want to see what, uh, okay, you're at Raj's Restaurant, you want to see what his samosas look like, you press that and it'll pop a picture of him up for you, so that you, this interactive kind of approach, um, we're going to see more and more of, um, so, yeah, I, I'm, I'm sure the technology's gonna outrun some of this.
Phil Goffin used to call Batman.
True, true.
But as of right now, what we would simply say is temporary, uh, as well as anything, you can't have more than 25%, and we would probably need to go back and rework some connections in the code, but the ultimate goal is to not have more than 25% of the windows covered with signs.
Temporary or otherwise?
Yeah, temporary, permanent or otherwise.
So, if you include that, then it gives you an opportunity to reg, to regulate, even though we don't think we're regulators. The, uh, uh, projection, projection type display, I don't know what else you'd call it, there's undoubtedly some technical term.
Yeah.
Batman signs, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
That's a good one. We'll remember that, Fabian. Okay, anybody got any heartburn with the suggested 25%? Want to make it bigger, smaller? Nope? Okay. Next item is pennants, and you're, you've outlined a, um-
We've outlined some standards, um, but as noted there, we would ask the commission to reconsider whether you want to include these as, as part of the, uh, the available mix of temporary signage. What, what we really, i- if you do, what we would look at is this, that we would limit the length of the strands, pennant strands, and that you, you basically can't have more than one of those strands per the street or the, the storefrontage.
And how would it be mounted?
Uh, oh, good question, we didn't address that in there. I would say that we would want it, once again, connected to some kind of permanent thing. I don't want it tied, I shouldn't say I, we would not recommend that it be tied around something.
You remember tying those up, don't you, Brian?
I'm sure you do, yes.
Oh, you do, too, I'll bet.
I've, I've done things with signs in my life I'm probably not proud of, but I've, you know, my father ran a, a gasoline station, so guess what?
It was actually a service station because they offered service in those days, Brian.
So, to clarify, Brian, you said that, um, this would not affect the car dealerships or the auto mall?
No, no, those are separate standards. This would simply extend this ability to other businesses.
I'm okay with not having them in that case.
Me, too.
Do I hear any objections from anyone? Staff recommendation? No? Okay. You have a similar recommendation for ground mounted wire or metal post mounted signs?
Yeah, the, the ground mounted ones, and we, we had some really good pictures of these, if you'll recall, they're the little signs that seem to get stuck everywhere around. Once again, I, I think that we're going to offer enough options that you don't really need to do these, um, but, uh, and so we would recommend that you not, I, I just think that they have an incredible ability to look cluttered, um, they seem to be stuck in with no rhyme or reason, um, and maybe that's just a personal subjective view, but, but I'll, I'll make it here. If, as a commission, that you want to look at allowing them, uh, we're recommending that we limit them to no more than five total per business, uh, we have a square footage and a height recommendation, and we'll leave it kind of in your, in your hands on that. Oh, and that they be within a certain distance of the business, actually.
These are the signs like the ones that Chairman Bose took of Carl's Jr.'s?
Yeah, yeah.
Does this also include the sandwich board style of signs?
Uh, you know, we didn't, we didn't touch on those in here, but I'll, uh, when we get to the end of this, I'll tell you what our thinking on it is.
So, staff's recommending that we, uh, not have wire metal posts or in-ground mounted signs as defined?
Yeah.
Any objection? How you can deal with the corporate world on that, the corporate fast food folks?
They'll hate it, but hopefully we'll give them enough other options that they can consider. You, you know, one of the things, I, I guess I'll bring it up at this point, um, one of the things that we would actually not mind and would, would prefer is that some of the newer, particularly fast food restaurants, they're beginning to put permanent wall mounted areas where they can put signs, you know, sometimes their poster or sometimes other things. Our code right now actually considers that kind of to be permanent signage, the way that it's mounted on the wall, and, um, we allow any sign to be a changeable copy sign, that's arguably changeable copy. Uh, I, our internal discussion has been, what's wrong with those? I, I almost would rather have that than, than have a bunch of stuff stuck in the landscaping or have a bunch of stuff plastered on the windows. So, you know, if someone says, hey, you know what we're gonna do? We're gonna put up five of those, like Carl's Jr. has, for instance, at 20th West and K, and my thought would be, why not? They look neat, they look like they're designed for their purpose, and, you know, what's the problem with that? They, they, you know, they have a neat orderly arrangement, they get the message across. So, maybe, maybe you'll see more places go that route.
But the trigger for those nifty little multiple dozens of around many corporate sends you is, is to trigger a, a purchase.
Sure.
So, when you get to the message board and give your order in a fast food operation, you've got a mindset that you want a quadruple burger with lots of bacon on it or something. I don't know.
Four by four.
Yeah.
Spoken like a man who's made that order.
My grandson.
I have to talk to you about this, Randy, I see, you know, let me take your pulse here. Four by four, holy Toledo. So, we're suggesting, or you're suggesting that we do not allow these as defined?
I, yes, I'm, that's our suggestion. Sensible does not necessarily mean you throw aesthetics out the window.
Right. Well, you have corporate operations, then you have franchisees as well.
Sure.
That've been in this community a long time and employ lots of folks.
Yes, they do.
Who, who maybe think something other than what you're recommending here, so.
I, they, they may.
So, our hope is, I think, as a commission, that we draw these folks out into the discussion when we finally get to a point of format it that we're, it's worth the discussion.
Yes, and, and that's a good point. When we get to the point that we actually have a, a proposed ordinance drafted, we, we will begin to, to reach out to the chambers of commerce and others that obviously will have an interest in this.
And the last one? Or next to last one?
Um, the pole post signs, these are, these are similar to the ones we talked about just previously, but instead of being their own kind of wire mounted, they tend to be tied around the lamp posts of, particularly in the shopping centers. Once again, uh, we just have a, a concern about the aesthetics of them, however, if, if you wish to consider them, we have put some standards that limit time, uh, require them to be within a certain distance of the actual business, um, and give some size.
Would the pole mounted signs be like decorations for holidays?
Holiday decorations are already permitted under another provision, there, there's certain number of aggregate days per year and, and things of that type, and I don't really want to mix the two. There's, there's some, there's some risk in doing that. We, we actually kind of had that, that discussion internally also.
I would speak against pole mounted signs, because you're gonna have somebody with a home base operation and they're gonna go be wrapping signs all over town.
I guess I'm unclear, as, uh, when we say lamp, uh, lamp post type signs, I'm thinking it's something where it's more likely than not vertical and it's up high near the light, the ones that we often see on the main streets. Is that not the same type sign?
No, the, the ones that we had identified, and I, I don't think we have, Joy, do we possibly have that PowerPoint still loaded? Let's see.
I'm clear now.
Oh, okay.
It's not what I thought.
Okay.
So, your recommendation then is, is that pole mounted, uh, lights, standard pole mounted signs is really what you're talking about, more often not found in a shopping center? On a, um, square tube steel post?
Correct.
Or maybe even around them?
Possibly, yeah.
Most of the stuff now is square tube steel, I think. Easier to mount those kinds of signs on that type of a pole.
I'm, I'm sure they are, yes.
So, your recommendation is that we, uh, we don't allow this?
Yeah, you don't include them.
I don't hear any compelling argument for them, so. And then the last one is inflatables.
Uh, the commission had originally said not to include these, we would continue to recommend that you not include them.
That I agree with.
But there are some marketers that, and some businesses that utilize the inflatables.
Yes, they do.
I mean, not-
Yes, they do.
Not retail businesses, I mean, other businesses utilize them. So, this would cover all inflatables, the recommendation is that they be excluded from the cities?
Correct.
Period.
Yes.
Anytime, anywhere.
Yes.
Except for the car lots, correct?
Well, once again, car lots are not included in this, that's a, that's a, that's a different.
Because I'm picturing a Goodyear blimp at some point over there just hanging for a few, just that I throw that out there, Brian.
Michelin Man, the Pillsbury's.
Yes, yes, technically it is. What, what I'm thinking of is, well, come to think of it, the car dealers, but these balloons with long, long, long strings, or, um, inflatable gorillas that sit on top of buildings and jostle in the wind, so. And, I was chewed out this morning by certain staff members, not present here, who seemed to think that, like, the dancing man and stuff were things that we should allow, and I couldn't tell if they were serious or not, so.
The one that does that?
That, yes, that, yes, yes, and in a strong wind will actually curl over the public right-of-way, which looks like it could snag itself on any RV or other thing with an antenna sticking up.
Did you invite them to attend our meeting and give us input?
For some strange reason, the city manager and deputy city manager don't often attend this meeting.
I do need to share that the, they were proposing perhaps coming in and performing a skit about inflatables to try to persuade you.
Which, for all I know, could include a simulation of that.
That we would like to get on video.
We can sit here right now and start the wave.
That's right.
Oh, my God.
I would be more than happy to relay your request to them.
It would definitely be sensible.
Okay, before I get in trouble anymore that I already am, um, so, is there anything further you want to add to the temporary promotional signs, or anything any of our members wish to add?
If I might, there, there is one provision that the three of us discussed last week during our last meeting, um, no matter how carefully we draft these provisions, the concern is that there's going to be non-stop temporary signage of one kind or another at a business. So, I was proposing including a sort of a default provision that notwithstanding anything else, there needs to be a certain number, say, three times during a year, three 30-day periods, during which there's no temporary signage of any kind at a particular business, and that I hope will kind of take care of that potential pitfall.
That makes sense. Sensible, right?
It would make them, um, take it down and renew it every, so that is good, yes.
All right, anything further on temporary signs? Nothing, all right, director's announcements, Mr. Ludica?
Um, I, at last Tuesday's council meeting, the, the council did take- I, at last Tuesday's council meeting, the, the council did take up the issue of the Better Build Home program. They approved that as, as the consensus recommendation of the planning commission or the consensus that you had reached as a commission. I would like to relay that I think, once again, the council was very appreciative of the commission's work on this effort, particularly, once again, highlighting the three commissioners, Commissioner Molly, Vice Chair Hall, and Commissioner Torassiano, who worked on the, the working group on it. And Chairman Bose and I gave the presentation, thought it went very well, and I believe that they feel that that's a, a really vital step forward for us as a community. So I, I relay from them their appreciation to you as a group.
Thank you. You know, it's always fun presenting to the city council because generally what happens is somebody comes up with a new idea, and lo and behold, last city council meeting, a new idea was presented, and a challenge, and a recommendation, and a request, and a direction. At least that's the way I read it. So, since we were so successful with the Build a Better Home ordinance, the recommendation and direction given to us is to come up with an ordinance to shift the cost of power to homeowners or property owners or landlords or whatever definition you choose to use instead of the tenant. And I took that to mean landlords as opposed, and property owners who rent property to And the suggestion was since there's no incentive for apartment owners to convert to energy-saving, electricity, electrical savings such as Energy Star or LED or whatever the case may be, we've been directed to go to work on that. So let's think about that for a while and, and maybe next meeting, we may want to take up a, a short discussion on that. I know Ms. Swain and Mr. Noga were very helpful with staff and, and the three members who served on our little task force, along with Ms. Cantrell and your staff. So it looks like we're going to end up reconstituting the group, at least that's what I heard. Would you agree, Mr. Ludica?
I, I interpreted the direction the same way you did, to, to look at this issue. So in what form we'll do that, probably need to think about for a little bit.
Anyway, so, maybe we'll talk about it next month, maybe not, just depends on, you know, time committed.
I sort of say it sounds impossible.
Yeah.
So it's only going to take a few hours, right?
Right. Right, exactly. All right, then. Anything further from the commission? No? All right, then. Public business from the floor on non-agendized items, we have no public attending this portion of the meeting tonight. So, tonight I'd like to, well, a lot of things I'd like to mention, but, you know, this being the holiday season and that, we won't be meeting again until after all the holidays. So I just want to wish, from my chair anyway, Merry Christmas to you all, because I celebrate Christmas, and a very healthy and prosperous New Year. I would also like to say, when we adjourn tonight, I would adjourn the meeting in memory of two colleagues, Carol Valdez and Susan Grantham. Both, both these ladies, Ms. Grantson passed away this morning, and Ms. Valdez, who I've known for an awfully long time, passed away last week. Anyway, they were colleagues of mine, Mr. Torassiano's as well. So that's all I have to offer, and if anyone else has anything to say before we adjourn, please speak right up.
Thank you, staff, for a wonderful year. Look forward to starting anew next year. Happy holidays, Merry Christmas.
All good. All right, then. We stand adjourned to our special meeting for agenda review Monday, January 12th, 2015, at 5:30 PM here at City Hall. And as a reminder, our regular meeting is on January 26th, this 2015, right? Okay. Thanks very much, y'all.